You're nervous.
I gave you all those extra names you're gonna have to work on because you're
Oh.
Since I've been able to call it.
It's gonna be in the, no, I don't know, your, Rome, yours is more good.
Yes.
I'm so close to your right guess. I mean, not as. Hey Sean. So Amy, do you mind if I jump in on that? I forgot to do this, safe energy. I think Scott Amy's. Oh. She's my life. It was here. That's probably. I don't even have. Just like from those kids from our church. Like she's one of those kids. That's weird. I give a cheer. You've gone already.
So there's two segments. But we'll get out early.
I'll double check, I can make that, but I'll just double check.
Is that why I had it then?
No.
It's corrected?
It's corrected.
Okay.
You were there.
I went there. There. Actually, composite. I did give that below a score.
Wow. You're always hard on your own kids, I get it.
That's ready.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 19th Regulars Meeting of the Granville Resented Village School District Board of Education. Would you please join me in rising for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, welcome to everyone that's here in person and joining us online. Would you please take the roll?
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Ms. Shaw? Here. Ms. Steves? Here. Mr. Crong?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Prior to taking the motion, I'd like to state that the agenda is, has been modified from its original post. We had to remove an individual who resigned. And so they had supplementals listed that they had been removed for this copy, but on the original post, they weren't on the agenda. So it's a tannerrance.
So moved as amended.
Set.
Thank you.
Please take the roll.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Steves?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw? Mr. Wolf?
Aye. All right. Just your highlights and recitations.
Yes, so we actually have one group and none of them are here. So, uh.
Wait a minute.
It's because, yeah, they're all at their awards banquet. So unfortunately, things align, so we have one combination that we will be making, and it's for all GHS music groups. They all received superior ratings at the OMAA this year. Preludes Orchestra, Synphonia, Concert Band Wind Ensemble, Tender Bass, Bass Choir, Treble Choir, Advanced Treble Choir, and Symphonic Choir. So it is concert season, and it has been phenomenal. I can share a lot of examples from all the different concerts, but I would say that just last week, we had a student-led concert for the first time, where just about every conductor was a student, and all the music arrangements were done by students. So the orchestra concert, and Owen White, if you're out there, he has a future as a future conductor, because it was impressive to watch him command the entire, there was actually some Wind Ensemble in the back, but the entire choir. So it was pretty impressive. So kudos to all of our music programs, they're all getting recognized tonight, and having a great time celebrating music. So if you're out there, we recognize you. All right.
Congratulations to them all. Board policy update.
Okay, moving right along. There is one policy recommended change, and it's related to our policy for programs for students who are identified as gifted. It's a first reading, as you know, we have a first reading and a second reading. However, related to this agenda item is a handbook recommendation, so that will just solidify this policy change. And this policy change is derived by state law and changes at, at the department. So again, everybody is still catching up from the change from the State Department of Education to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, so a lot of the changes are related to that. Any questions about policy changes?
That's just the first reading.
That's just the first reading. Okay, so I will turn it over to.
Or you want, oh. Facility master planning.
Oh, okay, well then I can go on to facility master plan. Thank you. All right. What I wanted to do is just highlight the, where we're at in the process, that's a beautiful picture, that's not the facility we're building. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Okay, so as you know, we had a strategic planning task force group that has been working for several years to strategically plan for the expected growth of the next 10 years in Granville, to maximize the benefits to the schools and the students we educate. We really had five areas of focus, really looking at enrollment and doing a deep dive into live birth rate data and cohort survivor methodologies, and we partnered with Wolpert to do those every so often in alternating years. We looked at housing analysis, we looked at the fiscal impact of growth on state funding, property tax, and income tax. We looked at a facility study two years ago, and all of that is, is kind of rolling forward into now what is the facility master planning process. So if, if you recall, we have had three community engagements. Those community engagements were to, one, build the history and the understanding of what the strategic planning task force has been doing. The second was to create some priorities for the task force to look at in developing options. And then the third meeting, they looked at options and gave us pros and cons to both of those options. The task force meeting last week, we had our seventh meeting of this year to review the feedback from the community meetings and prepare a master plan report to the Board of Education. So really, this is just an update to say that you will, at your next meeting in June, get a board report to you related to some of the things that they've identified as important for you to plan for and recognize in facility master plan. So that should be coming in June. Any questions? So we've had strategic task force meetings, facility master planning meetings, and now a report.
I, I'd just like to thank the administration and everyone that was in attendance at all three of these, I think you guys did an outstanding job on all three of these. For the public, you can go on our website to, to get the highlights and details of those meetings if you have any questions. And I'm gonna steal Mr. Brown's line, everyone should be prepared that this is in pencil, as Mr. Brown likes to say.
Not in pen, that's correct. This plan is written in pencil because I, I think in order to be adaptable to the changing circumstances, and they tend to be changing daily, I think it's appropriate to create a plan that has options for the world. And I wanna thank Thomas and Amy for your continued participation over the past several years in working with the strategic planning task force. Any other questions?
Quick kudos out to the streets and task force, it's, I mean, of course, administration, there's been, you know, twenty to thirty people at all these meetings and so forth that are in that caliber, and was really fortunate to be in a community where people are willing to step up, right, and offer great expertise that's been very insightful in the whole process, so, yes. The nice part is, is there's some, I wouldn't say congeal thinking around, you know, steps that we should be taking, so we don't have a wide variation, which is good to see.
Stay tuned for the June meeting.
Yes. But what you're all here for is the five-year forecast.
It is the first night nobody's left before I come on the screen, so this is a big crowd for me, you guys.
That's your cue.
Where you are internationally.
Yes, that's so true, okay. All right, so we have tonight an update of the five-year forecast. As we've talked about in the past, but just as a reminder, the five-year forecast is updated twice a year, first in November and then in May, and the forecast includes just our general operating funds, revenue and expenditures, shows three years of history, and then five years of projections. So what's really important when looking at the five-year forecast is understanding those assumptions, what's included in the numbers. So, want to give an update first as to what is not included in the May forecast. And these are pretty big disclaimers that we don't typically have during the May update, but because of where we are in the state budget table, I thought it was important this year to, to have these disclaimers. So the first, no changes have been made to state funding based on the proposed elimination of the guarantee. So if you recall, that was part of the governor's initial proposal with the state budget, was the elimination and phase out of the guarantee. So that has not been included in the state funding line item. Similarly, no changes have been made to property tax revenue based on the House's version of the budget, which would cap our cash balance at 30% of prior year expenditures. So keeping those two items in mind, and understanding what I've shared in the past with what the impact would be of those two items, if either one of those were to move forward in the final version of the budget, they would have a material impact on obviously the financial position of the district and specifically the five-year forecast, as we have it shown.
You can talk about either those in terms of magnitude later or anything like that, because those, I think are worth pointing out, are both very significant for us.
Uh, I can, I can mention them, I don't think I have, I'm not sure if I got those slides at the end, but.
Property tax one was like nine nearly a year, and the other one is boss.
Yeah, but we have it, you know, addressed in a different way, so we can get into that, but yeah.
Great.
Okay, so understanding what's not included, what is included, and what has been updated specifically since November. The first and most significant being an adjustment to capital projects transfers. We've talked about this at almost every single meeting since we implemented the Capital Projects Fund, but we have moved away from spending on capital projects directly out of the General Operating Fund and have instead elected to handle those items as transfers to a separate fund. So those items don't show up as capital outlay on the five-year forecast, but instead show up under other items, under transfers. And we had previously shown that as equal amounts during each of the forecasted years, but what we're doing instead in the May update is moving forward the next three years of transfers and moving those all into the current year. I'll get into the details as to why we made the decision to do that in just a minute, but that will have the most significant impact on what we saw in November versus what we're seeing now. The next three items are relatively small compared to that, the next being the negotiated agreement, so we came to an agreement with the Granville Education Association, so the assumptions include all of the changes related to salary and benefit items that were included in that agreement. So those have been updated with actual amounts for the next three years. And then for fiscal year '26, we had included, previously included, a new teaching position that was anticipated potentially due to enrollment needs. But based on where we are in the year, we've looked at enrollment and have decided that that position is not necessary, so we've eliminated that from the forecast for next year. And then the last thing, and this is really just an in and out on both the revenue and expenditure side, the signs of reading stipends were required to pay to staff for the training that they completed, the training that was required related to signs of reading, has a stipend associated with it, but we are reimbursed from the state, so we pay it as an expense, but then we get reimbursed and that shows up as revenue. Okay, so keeping all of that in mind, let's look at our forecast summary graph that we always start with. And this one has a little bit more of extended history on it, so that we can start to see the cyclical nature of our cash balance, because I think that's important to understand. So first, the purple line represents our cash balance, either historical, actuals, or projected. And then the red and the green lines represent our cash balance policy. So the idea is to have the purple line be within the red and the green, which is a pretty narrow margin, honestly, for an organization whose cash balance fluctuates pretty significantly over the course of the levy cycle. So you can see over the last several years that we've been slightly above our policy maximum, but then this year, you'll see that significant decrease from 24 to 25, and that's primarily due to that transfer, moving up of the capital projects transfers. So in the November forecast, that line would have been a little more gradual over the next three years, but still within the cash balance policy thresholds. So that's the biggest change. And then the other thing I wanna point out on here is when you get out to 29, there's a, a blue line that appears, and that is our cash balance without the income tax renewal. So once we get out to that year, we have to show that separately on the five-year forecast until that levy is renewed. So that would actually show us in negative cash without the renewal.
I would just highlight the fact that the Board of Education several years ago had the foresight to put in a cash balance policy. It started with a floor, then you added a ceiling a year later, two years later, and then required a plan to be submitted or reported to you related to if you went below or above those thresholds. And, and I think it's important to note that that was done pre-conversation about cash balance policies or anything like that, that this has been a measure that we've been using here for several years, and, and I think it's a feather in your cap that you were thinking that way a long time, because you know that you're stewards of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Okay, so looking at the same information in a little bit different format, I just wanted to show it this way as well, because I think it's helpful to see the actual dollar value. So again, in '25, this includes the transfers to the Capital Projects Fund under the expenditure line item of 45 million. What this accomplishes is gets our cash balance below 30% of our prior year expenditures, so under the House-proposed budget, we would not expect to lose any property tax revenue as a result of our cash balance being too high. So to just point about the cash balance policy and sort of our recommendation, without this transfer, we would have been a little bit above what our cash balance policy showed as far as the maximum. But considering our, the process we just are wrapping up with the facility master planning, as well as our existing capital projects, or capital budget plan and anticipated projects for the upcoming year, we are recommending that we move forward those funds, so that they are available as those projects come up. And then whatever is determined, as, as the final, I guess, recommendation from the facility master planning, we have those funds set aside to move forward with that plan at any time. The other thing, too, is although it won't show up on the five-year forecast, but from a transparency standpoint, I do include the Capital Projects Fund in every single one of our monthly financial reports and talk about it monthly, so it is very transparent how much money is in that fund, how it is being used, and we can report back to the community in that way.
Brittany, excuse me.
Yeah.
Could you go back one slide? Could you just do a brief explanation, a little more on the 30% cap in the House budget proposal?
Yeah, so the way that it is currently being proposed is that the cap, any school district would be capped at 30% of prior year expenditures. The way that the current calculation is being done is based on your expenditure number that includes transfers, which in our case is the 45 million. So take 30% of that in the prior year, and that's what your cash balance can be at the end of the next year. So in this case, the way I calculated it was not 30% of the 45 million, but I actually took out the $8 million that we have of transfers, just to be a little bit more conservative, because I could see the House, or as that, as the bill progresses through the Senate and is finalized, that being changed, kind of as seeing that, that districts might use that as a loophole in the calculation, the transfer piece. So when you look at the 30% cap, that calculation, I have a disclaimer at the bottom, is the 45 million less the transfers amount of 8 million. And so that's where we're ending at, where we're projecting to end at a little over 11 million, the 30% cap is 11.2, so we would be under that calculation and therefore not at risk of losing property tax revenue.
And could you just do a brief overview of how this process, how the budget process is, is working, so everybody?
Yeah, yep.
In the room and.
Yes, so.
Ladies online will.
Yes, so the budget process first starts with the governor's proposal, and then it moves to the House. So that is where we are currently, it has passed out of the House, and is now being considered by the Senate. The Senate plans to release their version of the budget in early June, and after that point, it goes to conference committee, which is made up of members of both the House and the Senate. I don't believe we know who those specific individuals are yet, but I think that that really determines whether the committee then uses either the House version or the Senate version as sort of their template for the final version that goes to the governor for final approval.
And the governor does have the ability to remind, I had a detail from that.
Yes.
Recent updates that anybody's heard or insights from that process as it moves along?
I, I believe that there is recognition in the Senate that the 30% cap, specifically for districts like Granville, that have a, that are not at the 20 mil floor, that have a levy cycle that's consistently three to five years, our run rate can be 30% from the first year of the forecast to the ending forecast. So there's recognition that that's too low, so I anticipate that that will be higher. I don't think that it's going to fully address our needs, but I think there is understanding now, because if you were down at the State House, there were a lot of people that testified in, in Senate education and, was it Ways and Means, I think?
Yeah.
That were talking about Hospital 96 and their proposal, so, but it's important to know that Granville is different, district, different, because we are not at the 20 mil floor.
And I'd just like to compliment Mr. Brown and then Mr. Dodd, who is a lobbyist at the village, the township, and the school board have retained, and we're, we're making our position now to not only our, our three representatives that cover our district, but to also leadership and, and other members as well, so.
Well, and I will tell you that all we're doing is parroting what Brittany tells us to say, because she does an excellent job of framing it in the context of Granville, and there's so much, I mean, there's so much conversation that happened at the Finance Committee that I think would be extremely valuable, valuable for the entire community to hear, however, you don't have that much time. But it, I think the way that we have, we continue to be transparent from the Treasurer's Office is commendable. And award-winning, but.
International.
Yes.
But it is important to communicate our individual story.
Yes.
Because it's different, and I think that's one of our main points, because we're trying to propose solutions to, to our elected officials, not just complain about the problems. And so one of the things we've talked about is, is local control, and why doesn't this just come back to local boards, they should have policies similar to ours, for the exact reason that we talked about, why we're different than other districts, there's not a one-size fits all solution to this.
And, and I just add, there are other districts similar to ours around the state.
Around, yeah.
So there's, there's a group of folks, and hopefully their, their districts are doing what ours is, and I think, I'd like the community to know, I think we're doing a really good job of being aware of what's happening. And, and as, as you said, sharing our point of view, yeah, I think that's what we can do. So, thank you.
One more highlight from this slide that I wanted to mention, the blue bars on the graph represent our days of cash on hand from the November forecast, and then the orange is the current forecast. And what I think this graph specifically helps us see is the impact of just the timing of those transfers and how they're just moving up the timeline, and we actually end in a better cash position, I know it's two days, but I'll take two days by the end of the forecast, so it really is just a matter of timing. Okay, so jumping in then to revenue, first, I want to talk about the graph on the left showing that property tax still is our largest source of revenue. So we've talked a lot about how important the income tax is, how it's about 20%, but property tax still remains our largest source of revenue. That's why this is so impactful and why we really have to pay attention to. That's why this is so impactful and why we really have to pay attention to all these bills being proposed at the state level. Historically, our revenue increased a little over 6%, but that includes the phase-in of the income tax still. So that is, you're only going to see a percentage that high after you pass a levy, whether it be income tax or property tax. So projected going forward, we're a little, projecting a little over 2%. And then similar to the previous slide, in '29, you have to show the income tax renewal separately, so that's the little orange slipper up there. So I'll go into a little bit more detail on our three largest sources of revenue, the first being property tax. And again, I have a disclaimer because I don't think it can be said enough, that the forecast does not include any reductions related to the House's version of the bill. So as far as what assumptions are included, there's really two components to projecting property tax revenue. The first, and they both relate to estimating our total valuation. The first being the increases that we see during reappraisal and update years, so that's every three years. In '23, we had a 30% increase in property values related to reappraisal, and then in '26, we're expecting a little over 7%. But the important thing to understand, as was mentioned previously, we're not on the 20 mil floor. So as values increase due to reappraisal and update, our tax rates are adjusted down, so the amount of revenue for the left coming is about the same. So that's where I've highlighted and went to the significant increase in valuation, but the corresponding decrease in our tax rate. The second piece then to valuation estimates relate to new construction. So that would be related to any new residential or commercial development that occurs within the district. That increases value and does increase revenue. So we have assumptions built in related to the known developments that we have at this time, specifically like Willow Bend, we're looking at that and tracking the number of units and the values, and as those hit the tax rolls, adding those into our assumptions here. But even with, you know, the significant increases in update and reappraisal and new construction, you can still see that over time, these bars are still relatively flat. So the bottom line is with property tax revenue, we don't get much growth over time. Okay, next, income tax. So the income tax for fiscal year '25 does represent actual at this point in the year, and I'll talk about that as part of the monthly financial after this presentation. But we receive those payments quarterly, so we received the last payment in April. And we're up about 4% over prior year, which is good because last year we were down. So we are trending back in the right direction, which is positive. But we still aren't quite back to the '22 level yet. But I do think that this year was helpful to kind of level set and maybe provide us with a good base year to estimate going forward. It's been a little bit of a wild ride with the income tax during the phase-in. It's of course hard to project what you're going to see, and then we were hit with COVID right after that. So the revenue has really fluctuated. But that's kind of the point, too. So the point of the income tax was to diversify our revenue streams and provide a source of revenue that adjusts with the economic conditions of the community. So 50% of our revenue, income tax revenue, is from withholdings. So that's your standard payroll income, and that tends to increase year over year at a pretty stable rate. The other 50% comes from all other income, which are payments with returns and estimated payments. That's where income itself can fluctuate much more significantly, but also the timing of those payments. Employers are required to withhold the school district income tax, so that's going to come very stable amounts each quarter. But the timing of the estimated payments, payments with returns, really depends on when people file taxes and how much they're estimating with those payments. So that 50% is much more difficult to predict, and I think where we probably saw the significant decrease in '24. And just to provide a little bit more history on the income tax and how we are projecting, we, since we have a traditional tax, we can actually look at total taxable income over time and see how that total taxable income has changed to determine what our revenue might do. So just looking at the trends here is helpful to understand what, how that might correlate to our revenue. So over this period of time, the change was about 4%. So the fact that we came in at 4% this year and we're projecting around 4% going forward, I think is pretty reasonable. And the problem is, this is hard because the latest year we have is '22, and we're now sitting in May of '25. So it really is a historical view, but gives us some more information to base our assumption off of. Okay, the last piece of revenue is state funding. Again, my disclaimer that this does not include any elimination of the guarantee. So what is important though, when you're looking at this, is to understand the magnitude of the guarantees and the degree to which we are on the guarantee, to know how much we could potentially lose. So that's why for the future years, I've shown in orange the guarantee amount. So that's the maximum that we could lose if the guarantee is eliminated. Under the Governor's proposal, it was based on a certain percentage of that, so we wouldn't necessarily lose the whole 2.6 next year. It'd be, I think it was around 500,000 the first year and a million the second year. But understanding that about half of our state revenue could disappear if the guarantee were to be eliminated is important to understand. It's also important to understand that because we're on the guarantee, we don't see an increase in state funding if enrollment increases. So that's why when we talk about residential developments, yes, we see an increase in property tax revenue because of new construction, and yes, we see an increase in income tax. But unlike most other school districts, we're not going to see an increase in state funding. So that's what makes those developments very challenging from a financial standpoint. Where are you going to say something there?
I see.
Okay.
You got it.
All right, so that rounds out our revenue, and moving on to expenditures. Just want to briefly highlight, the graph on the left shows the breakdown of our expenditure categories, but this is only for fiscal year '25. Typically, when we look at this, it shows closer to 80% being personnel costs. But with those transfers being included in there, it's driving up the all other expenditures category, which then drives down personnel. So just want to point that out because it was odd to me when I first saw it until I thought that through. And then you'll notice the same corresponding outlier really in '25 in the bars. You would typically see a much more gradual growth over time, but instead we have that jump in '25 and then decrease in '26, the growth from there. So historically, expenditures increased at about 5.5%. We're projecting closer to 7%, but I don't think I said this in the beginning, this is a forecast, it is not a budget, it's not a spending plan by any means. And I would say we're pretty conservative on the expenditure assumptions. So our expenditures almost always come in less than what we have projected, so we know that that number will improve as time goes on. So enrollment, it's interesting because these graphs typically, or the graph on the left typically, in those forecast models, appears on the state funding slide, but for us, it's not relevant to state funding, it's relevant to expenditures. Because that is where we would see increase in expenditures related to additional teachers needed to accommodate enrollment growth. So I show it here instead, and then we've also added an expenditure per pupil graph because it's important to understand how our expenditures are growing related to growth in enrollment. So yes, our expenditures are growing at a rate higher than you might anticipate with inflation, but when you look at it compared to expenditure per pupil on an inflationary basis, we're actually right in alignment with that. So what I've done for the historical years is taken our actual expenditure per pupil and applied the rate of inflation in each of those years, and that's what the orange line is showing to what our expenditure, expenditure per pupil should have been if it increased at the rate of inflation. So you can see at the end of '24, the orange line is right at the very top of the blue bar, which means that we're right on track with where we should be spending. I'm not projecting inflation going forward because that's hard. Salaries, so similar to revenue, I'll highlight our larger, larger three categories of expenditures. So for salaries, the update since May, as I mentioned, includes the negotiated agreement. So we have those base increases included in there for the next three years. Again, eliminated the position for '26 and the signs of reading stipends. So those are the changes we made from November to May. What has been in there since November has not changed are the assumptions for '27, '28, '29, which I have listed on the slide, the additional staffing assumptions that we have included in each of those years, anticipated need, need based on enrollment growth. So again, as we've shown and demonstrated this year, if the enrollment numbers aren't there and we don't need to staff, we won't add them. But they're there as placeholders if needed. On the benefit side, as far as the negotiated agreement goes, we have changes related to the premium share, employee and employer share changes over each of the next three years, as well as changes to HSA contributions. So those have largely offset the salary increases. And then the underlying assumptions related to medical increases, which is the largest driver of the benefit line item, are listed there as well. So 9.9 was the actual increase that we had for calendar year '25, and then we do have a rate cap of our carrier at 12.5 for calendar year '26. And then the 10s are projected just based on historical increases that we have seen. But what I really want to highlight here is the historical period of 2020 through '24. Seeing those bars be as flat as they were over that period of time is huge, and you probably won't see that anywhere else, especially during that period of time. Costs have increased, care, our claims have increased. It's just not where you're going to see savings typically. But we have been very diligent about getting bids from carriers as often as possible to make sure that we're maintaining and doing everything that we can to save on this cost without having to do major plan design changes. So that's really your, your other option to save with medical insurance. And then the same assumptions carry through here with the additional staff. Of course, then we have allocations related to the benefit plans that they would require. Purchase service, I actually didn't make any changes here since November, so not a lot to say, but just want to highlight the three major components of our purchase service. For us, it does include custodial, so there are some personnel costs in there. Utilities, those are only going up. And then special education services, a lot of the contracts that you approve every month fall under this line item as well. So we have inflationary increases built in based on each category of purchase service going forward. Lastly, all of our expenditures, this one looks a little weird because of, again, the transfers, so that's represented by the red on the graph. So you can see that we first implemented that last year, and then previously we had 2 million, 2 million, 2 million, and all we've done is just scoot that forward and have 8 million projected for this year. The only other highlight here that is a little weird, the blue bar, section of the bar represents supplies, and last year we had the signs of reading material purchase, so that inflated the '24 amount, so we've backed that down. But typically, you're not going to see a decrease in any of these line items either.
Well, does expenditure per pupil include capital project transfers since it's operating fund or is there...
When I do it, it does not. So it depends on the source and where you're getting your information from. But that was one of, to me, the selling points of our cash balance policy, as well as the Capital Projects Fund, was that I specifically stated that we would exclude those transfers from the calculation because what that actually does is, well, first of all, I think it's more accurate, and it actually increases than what your days of cash would be. So I didn't want the criticism that, you know, we were transferring to just to try to artificially get below our policy threshold or something like that. So I think it's more accurate, and it's not necessarily though going to be consistent to what you see on the report card at the cup report, because every single one of those sources, that's where it gets tricky with the expenditure per pupil, because it's like, what expenditure number are you using, and then what pupil number are you using? So it gets a little weird, but.
Yeah, it's really difficult to look at that over time and things like that because of all these different variables and different metrics that people use and so forth. So I think you did have done the right way, but even 2024 would have been skewed by that, right? It doesn't really make sense to include expenditure per pupil of operating expense if the operating expense is capital expense.
Right. Which is why I think it makes sense to do it as a transfer, because if you keep it in as capital, there's really not a good way to exclude that. So it's another reason for having the Capital Projects Fund separate.
Good job. Yeah, thank you. And the Capital Projects Fund has a 10-year...
Yes, yeah, so that's a great clarification as well. So the Capital Projects Fund has, is limited to capital expenditures, obviously, but it does provide flexibility and some restriction that the funds have to be used within 10 years. So every time we approve one of those transfers, I set it up with a year-specific code so that we can track how many years the funds have been in there. And that's important to know because if, for some reason, our capital plans change or our facility master plan changes and we don't need the funds that we transfer to the Capital Projects Fund, they can be transferred back into general operating fund, either prior to the 10 years or at the expiration of that time period.
Thank you.
Okay, so wrapping things up, just to bring us back to this graph and the main takeaway here, and that is that excluding any of the state budget considerations, which are huge exclusions, the district does anticipate maintaining a sufficient cash balance through fiscal year '27. But beyond that, we may need to consider looking at additional operating funds through a new levy at that time. So the other thing I wanted to say is that while the forecast is required to be updated twice a year, you can update it as often as, well, we use it every month internally, but we can always update and resubmit to the state as well. So if something majorly changes with the state budget as it goes, as we go through June, we can always look at submitting an updated version of the forecast come July if there's significant changes that we wanted that. Any additional questions? Anything I missed from Brittany?
I think this graph is kind of nice also. It really shows, I mean, the red line is effectively at 25% of our revenue or whatever, right? So if the policy is that 30% will lose all the property taxes, you'd have to keep that purple line between 25 and 30%.
Yeah.
Right? And that would just be very impractical. You'd have to kind of like run a levy every six months or something like that.
Yeah, run smaller, smaller levies.
Which maybe is a different way to do it, maybe that's what they're saying they're looking for, but like, I don't know that our community really wants to run a levy every six months, right? And I think the way that we've been doing the system as well, right? And I think the way that we've been doing the system as well, right? Like, I mean, we tell the community we're going to try and stretch it out, make it last five years. And that's just the way the inflation happens and so forth. So I think this graph is just right where it needs to be. And the right thing with our cash balance policy, which many districts have not done. And that's the source of the problems around Ohio, districts on the 20 mil floor that have maybe their entire year's worth of budget in cash and so forth. And that's maybe problematic for those communities and so forth that could better use those resources. So I think we're doing just exactly the right thing. And I think the capital project transfer is the right thing as well. So thanks for reviewing that.
Yeah, so the, just as far as like next steps, we have this included in the forecast because I think it's important for us to see the financial implication of those changes before you consider actually approving the transfer. So we, I would anticipate having the transfer for you to actually approve on the June agenda.
What would be the benefit of resubmitting in July if necessary, just transparency?
I think it would be important for...
Yes.
For the community to see publicly what the impact of the changes are. But also for the entities that, you know, allegedly review our five-year forecast when it's submitted, for them to understand the impact of what the bill did.
So it's the auditor's office that reviews. But then does that information, this might sound really naive, does that information then get to any other legislators or the governor's office? Not necessarily. Or even are there any points in which the auditor's office looks at patterns? Kind of like we were talking about how there are other districts like ours, but we are somewhat unique?
I would say they're looking at it now more than they ever have.
The auditor's office?
Well, legisla-, everyone.
Okay.
That's why the cash balance issue was proposed, was because they're seeing a trend that districts are having more cash on hand. And just so that everybody understands, the reason for that is because two things, ESR money. So a lot of districts use ESR money to offset general fund expenditures. So they save general fund money, which seems like a great idea.
Is the desire to have it.
And then the second thing is whenever counties went through their last reappraisal, which most counties in the state, a majority of them are on the 23 cycle, saw significant, I mean unprecedented increases in valuation, which increased revenue for districts already on the 20 mil floor or pushed districts to the 20 mil floor. So that's why districts have a lot of cash. So we're also trying to like solve a one-time problem with a long-term solution that doesn't quite match.
And worse let yet, like a one-size-fits-all solution, right? Which is a challenging thing, right? And I think it's also being clouded or obscured significantly and at the same time amplified by the politics involved in, you know, how we fund schools in the future and property taxes and their claims. We, if that's got to be property tax, that'd be all easy and so forth. Well, I mean, if we're going to have education in any sort, we need to pay for it, right? Nobody said they're really looking for a lot of other taxes, right? And it's easy to say, yeah, I don't want this kind of tax or that kind of tax. But like, in reality, if public edu-, if education in any sort is a thing, it needs to be paid for. So I think there's a lot of that going on. And I think that it will be good to go through the process anyway, if not formally filing it, just because there's so many balls in the air with this upcoming budget that we really have no idea where it's going to come out right now.
Yeah, I mean, we will definitely look at it internally. Whether we need to resubmit, I think depends on whether it's a material difference to what we have here or not. So we'll keep you updated with that.
Thank you.
Okay. And as if that wasn't enough, let's do... I have a promise I'll definitely make.
Appreciate the colors on your slides. Keep it focused.
I don't appreciate this picture coming up every time I try to represent.
I like this bright red circle around.
Yes. Okay. April, yes. So usually I gloss over this, hey, we're, you know, this much above where we were last April. But I wanted to point out that the blue bars for the current year, for the future months, are projections based on our forecast. So that's why you see June drops down significantly over prior year because we're accounting for those transfers. So if they don't happen, our cash would stay up, but this is pulling directly from the forecast. Does that make sense?
That's good. That's from right there.
Oh, okay. You were concerned.
No, I mean, I wish the general assembly could see that.
Okay, yeah. Okay, revenue for the month of April. I mentioned that this was an income tax payment month, which was 11% higher for the April quarterly payment compared to last year. Year-to-date is 4%, but compared to prior quarter, it was 11%. And then there is some timing with the rollback in homestead payment. So that's causing a little bit of fluctuation in the local tax line item as well. Then looking at year-to-date, as I mentioned, the income tax and property tax are up slightly over prior year. So that's why we're seeing the increase in the local tax line item. But it's a little bit higher than where it should be because last year, we didn't receive the rollback in homestead payment until May. It's just showing through April. And then the other two line items are right in alignment with prior year. On the expenditure side, in April, we had two custodial payments, just based on timing of when we got those invoices. One was at the beginning, one was at the end of the month. So that's inflating the purchase service amount for this year. Expenditures year-to-date, after adjusting for the capital projects transfers, expenditures are actually up 1.9 million over prior year as opposed to the 400,000 that you're seeing on the slide. Again, that's in alignment with the forecast and everything that we've talked about as far as base salary increases and the additional staff that we have this year. And then purchase service is up over prior year. Again, we've talked about that previous month. It's largely related to special education, contracted services, utilities, et cetera, that have increased with inflation and service needs. Here is our Capital Projects Fund report. And this is pretty simplified because we only have one transfer and one pot of money that we're dealing with right now, specific to the air handler one and five at the high school, which is largely to be completed over the summer. But if we were to move forward with the $8 million transfer next June, I would show that probably separately and then have a little bit more detail as to how that's being spent over time. But just wanted to highlight that this is included every month. And then just our cash reconciliation. And that is it for the month of financial. Any questions on that? All right.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's plenty.
Okay, we're at the point of our meeting for public comments. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. Had to be considered a public community meeting. There's a tax for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. See board policy BDH-R, public participation at board meetings. If anyone would like to make any comments, I invite you up to the podium. Please state your name and address. Okay, seeing none. The action agenda. Okay. Action agenda 5.01 is the approval of the 2024-2025 graduates of Gramble High School. Very excited graduation, May 25. Take the roll, please.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
5.02 is the approval of the food service contract with ADI. And just so you're aware, we have a multi-year contract, but we approve it every single year as a board. There was some legislative conversation at one point about free lunch plans again. We went through that process, was it just after COVID or during COVID or whatever? Is that the thing that's moving forward? I heard that.
So a lot of districts moved forward with it this past year. You have to look at your income numbers to determine whether that's financially sustainable or not. So during COVID, the calculation was different. So it didn't matter what our income number was. It was a flat reimbursement amount. So if we were to do something like that, we would likely need general fund transfers to support the food service fund.
There is a need for it of some sort, like there was before.
Well, there is, but it's, it doesn't offset the cost like it did during COVID. So right now, our food service fund has been self-sustaining. But if we were to move to the community eligibility provision, which is what it's called, we would have to supplement.
Yeah. Well, I think the fact that we have really excellent food in our schools is just a great priority that the board has had been able to sustain and so forth. And the fact that it's financially is stable is fantastic. So hopefully I can continue to do good job.
Ms. Wolf?
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Action item 5.03 is the appointment of the Community Improvement Corporation Board. Sean Jones? Okay.
We're very prepared.
Very prepared. Sean is here. He's in the audience. So as you know, the board originally appointed Eric Smith. Eric Smith's last meeting will be in June. We thought it would be important to keep continuity. So we're acting now and his first official meeting will be in June as Eric rolls off. And Sean has been a huge supporter of the schools during his time in Gramble. And we're looking forward to his continued efforts on the CIC. Now, just for everyone's benefit, the CIC was formed by Gramble Schools, the village, and the chamber. There are representatives from Dennison and from the township as well. But it really, the whole point of the board is to stimulate economic development. It's something that we've been singing from the hilltops since 2012 about making sure that we have economic development to offset and support the tax burden in Gramble specifically. And that is a huge step in making some of that economic development a reality. It's in its infancy, but I think it will pay dividends long into the future. So thank you, Sean, for accepting that responsibility.
And he has a lot of experience with small businesses.
He does.
Therefore, he can be an excellent asset.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Jones for his willingness and commitment to the community. It's very much appreciated.
And Eric as well, see, arts and things like that for his getting us started.
Yeah. Take the roll, please. Sorry, sorry.
No, I was, I actually, I was going to say thank you to Eric at the June meeting, but if he's listening. You know, Eric has been a consistent member of the Finance Committee for 10 years and has been a part of a lot of the work that we did with the facility master planning process. So he's a tremendous asset to the community. And the community doesn't necessarily always understand who's volunteering their time behind the scenes. So it's important to recognize him.
You're going to have to do that again in June.
I'll do it again in June.
Please take the roll.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Shaw? Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Item 5.04 is the approval of service agreement with Knox ESC.
So moved.
This is for special education services. Please take the roll.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Item 5.05 is the approval of the service agreement with Sciota LLC for custodial services. If you remember, at a previous board meeting, we identified Sciota as the vendor through the RFP process that we conducted. And now we have the agreement with them in place. They will start June 1. Please take the roll.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
5.06 is the approval of the gifted handbook that I mentioned earlier.
So moved.
Second. Can you remind me, the board policy also had to do with gifted something or other?
Yeah, they're combined. The handbook is just updating the language in the handbook to align with the new policy.
And then, but then we'll have to approve the new policy next month.
It's, it's, yes, you'll approve the policy. The handbook's being approved now.
Cool.
Because it doesn't require two readings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. But, thank you.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Okay. 5.07 is approval of forgiveness of vacation repayment.
Salute.
So this item is waiving vacation days that were provided in error related to a contract. This forgiveness require, doesn't require the employee to pay back or rework days given through that vacation leave error. And that's been rectified. It's been rectified in the contract moving forward. Take the roll, please.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you. 5.08 is the approval of a resolution declaring transportation impractical.
So moved.
Second.
As you recall, this is a two-step process. The first is to deem transportation to Marburn as impractical. The second is a payment in lieu of transportation, which is also on this agenda.
And this one is just an additional student, too. Like, we did this earlier in the year, but this is an additional student for this piece.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you. 5.09 is the approval of the certified substitute rates.
Second.
We are aligning this substitute rate with other rates that we approve annually. But we're changing the methodology so that it's a percentage based on the lowest base salary of the teacher. So it is 0.7, or 5.7% of that rate. And as that rate changes with collective bargaining, so will this rate. So we don't have to approve it every single year. And it keeps up, hopefully, with inflationary growth.
We really struggled a couple years with substitutes and finding sufficient numbers and appropriate and so forth. Is that, that kind of going for the most part?
For the most part. I mean, we still have heavy days. But I think in general, we have a decent pool of candidates that we pull from. And I would say the quality of our substitute pool is pretty robust.
Great. Let's go here.
Take the roll, please.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Okay. Item 5.10, approval of salary schedules.
Second.
Thank you. As we do often, as we look at salary rates of different categories of individuals, we do a market analysis to see if we're above or below the market trend. During our analysis of the administrative salary structures, two structures stood out as not appropriate or out of market. And so that is the assistant superintendent and the assistant high school principal position. So we have, we are recommending that those salaries, schedules be adjusted to align with market trend. Mr. Brown, I'm just curious, do we look at both Lincoln County and Franklin City?
Yes. And we look at comparison districts that are comparison groups related to the state of Ohio. So like Chagrin Falls, everybody knows Chagrin Falls and Granville are pretty much identical except for a waterway going in that drops. We have a waterway, it just doesn't have waterfall.
According to the last PowerPoint, we're going to have a beach and a. Right. Beach and a bridge. It's in the facility master plan. I heard a rumor. But stay tuned. Don't let us take away. Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Board discussion.
Just a little later than you should do.
Yeah, something's different tonight.
Oh, it's on top of the agenda, that's why.
It's usually after the.
Well, so actually, this brings up a great point. So the board is now using Board Docs. And this is our first meeting using Board Docs. So we are transitioning to the format so that Board Docs currently holds our board policies, but now it will hold all of our meeting agendas and documents in as well, which is, has a forward-facing public view, but also a rear-facing administrative and executive view, which is very helpful. So yeah, not sure how that got out of alignment, but now you know and we'll fix it for the future. And it's cool, you can log in and you can see attachments of all the contracts and things that we just approved. So if you'd like, maybe in details there, we all have login so you can review those if you like.
And for the, from the public perspective, it's kind of user-friendly too. You can search names and content items and it'll pull up from whatever agendas have those items, which is nice.
Yeah, and it automatically creates minutes as soon and so forth, so. Great.
I'm not sure what our real board floor discussion is, but we do want to keep it above.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. I just made a note of that in the template.
Any topics of interest? Discussion?
Well, no, a number of us have the opportunity to witness our AP government students last Friday, today, and tomorrow as well. Really done taking on a lot of important topics within our local legislature. So whether it be Senate bills, House bills, they're either taking a proponent or opponent stance on it and really presenting an argument that is quite, sometimes above my level, I would say. But at the same time, it's, it's really given us, I think, a better understanding of, again, the quality of education that Granville provides. But additionally, kind of unfortunate for graduate is we had to make a couple of adjustments to, to the schedule. So outside of that, you know, Mr. Hoppy's AP government class, really looking forward to some of these future leaders as they start to develop and grow into, into their young adult lives.
Maybe we can have them look into state education funding?
One of the, one of the interesting topics today was actually cell phone bills or cell phone bans in public schools.
Sure.
And whether that should be state legislative action or considered at the local level.
Any proponent, proponent testimony for the students on that one?
We actually got some quite candid feedback how it should be local level determined.
One class did proponent last Friday and then one class did opponent today. So it was good to hear the back and forth. That's great. Might inform a little bit our progress on that policy, but I think we're kind of waiting until we did settle. I have a feeling the governor's going to tell us what we need to do. That's, that's, might be a one-size-fits-all policy for the state of Ohio.
Maybe the kids can't get mad at us now.
Uh, that's not going to happen.
Not in my house. I'll blame the governor, that's easy. Not your mom.
I'll, I'd just like to add, I said to Mr. Brown, some of the, many of the student presentations, I turned to him afterwards and said, we need to send him down to the State House. They were outstanding. And it'd be, I think it'd be hard to say no to them because they were well-prepared. We tried, some of us tried to lead them down rabbit holes and we were very impressed on that he wouldn't go down there as much as we tried. But it was very, every year it's always super impressive. I know Mr. Miller's done it. It's exciting and it's nice to be included. I think it's really great to see the job Mr. Hoppy's doing and the students. Yeah. And I, I think it's also notable that this is happening in the last week of school, basically. And the level of engagement's still very high. And it's true in a lot of our classes. Last, last week I participated in AP chemistry's presentations and from making sourdough to the erosion of your enamel and teeth with different soda products, which by the way, they actually had kids bring in their old baby, old baby teeth. They did the study. It was freakishly weird, but cool. But I mean, the, the, the level of competency that our students have to articulate really complex scientific models is, it's mind-blowing. And when Mr. Bernath is impressed with the kid's science acumen, that's impressive. And he walked out and said, wow. So kudos to all our staff members. I know that the end of the year is, you know, a busy time of year, but a lot of it is showcasing all the things that our students have done and showcasing their growth over the years. And that's one of the best parts of our job. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I feel like the Granville teachers are not letting up. You know what I mean? Not, I don't mean in like a high-pressure way. I mean, in like keeping those kids engaged and that's really important. Yeah, kudos to them definitely.
Okay. Any other board discussion? Do I need to publicly share the consent agenda or do I? It, we have it all listed out. So I will, all you have to do is, I, I can say, I'll take care of it. So I would recommend the consent agenda, 7.01 through 7.20, which is the actual approval, so. Mr. Brown, why don't you take care of that? Can I get a motion? So moved. Take the roll, please. Well. Oh, I'm sorry. See, this, we're all rookies today. This is great. So for everyone watching, the consent agenda is where we have the routine business of the Board of Education through consent. But in this particular agenda, we have a lot of the annual HR items. So we have contract, certified contract renewals, classified contract renewals, exempt employee contract renewals. We have the administrator contract renewals. We have exempt employee salary increases, administrator stipends, administrative increases. We have resignations. And I would like to call your attention to the retirement resignations, which we have one of them in the room tonight. Debbie Thomas is, is finishing her career in Granville schools. So I always say with appreciation of service, but somehow that doesn't seem sufficient. So we're definitely going to miss those that are moving on for other aspects of their life. Do we have to accept them? I think in the interest of their lives, yes. And we always appreciate the donations that are provided and we do our typical adoption of minutes and. Any questions?
Where is the nurse going? The nurse, what building?
G I S.
Uh, yeah, where is she?
Amy Patrick has.
So was she our district nurse?
No.
Oh, okay.
Gina, Gina Berdick, the elementary is our district nurse. And Mr. Brown, maybe it's because you're a Rotarian, but once again, the Granville Kiwanis.
Oh, the sheep?
Contributed for the sheep over at the. Yes, yes. They, they, I will, I will have to admit as a Rotarian, the Kiwanis do a very good job of supporting Granville schools. So maybe that's a call to action, Mac. What do you think?
Y'all are missing the point, they're doing sheep.
Yes. We are getting sheep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And for those that don't know, I'm a member of Kiwanis, so. I know that's shocking. I'm obligated to point that out. Take the roll, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. And Mrs. Newcomb. Mrs. Newcomb has been here forever as well.
I guess fourth grade.
Yeah, fourth grade, so, yeah.
All right, item 8.01 is approval of the five-year forecast.
Any discussion? Is she done? Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Item 8.02 is a resolution authorizing payment in lieu of transportation.
So moved.
Okay, as we mentioned, this is the second part of that two-step process where we pay a statement to parents to transfer their students to certain schools.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
8.03 is approval of the then-and-now resolution.
So moved.
Second.
This one is for rush truck centers for bus parts that exceeded $3,000. So requires board approval. I think there was a P O. It just exceeded the total that was left available on that purchase order.
Okay. Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.
Mr. Crong?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to enter into the executive session to consider the employment of public employees or officials. Do we expect to have any business coming out of executive session?
There was no action after the executive session.
Thank you. Take the roll, please.
Ms. Deeds?
Aye.